Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, July 12th, and this is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to call this meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first thing we have on the agenda tonight is minutes that need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen for the June 21st and June 7th, 2021 regular session meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Let's move on to meeting mail. Tonight, we have a letter from a gentleman who is in place here, from Mr. Ray LaBine, who has been on the Bylaw Review Committee, is resigning from that position. He notes in his resignation letter that he's served the town for the past 30-plus years, but being in his mid-80s, he's not as full of steam as he once was. So gentlemen, accept this letter of resignation from Mr. LaBine. Thank you very much for your service over the past years.
Can we send Mr. LaBine an appreciation letter, please? It's a lot of years of service.
Okay, so all right, let me just get it organized here a second. And we'll be back in a minute. Okay, next, we have a resignation letter from a short with town moderator Roger Cabral. And in the letter, Roger says he's moving from town and is with sincere regret that I have to announce my resignation from the position of moderator in the town of Acushnet. After nearly 27 years in town, my wife has sold our home and will be moving to another neighboring community. My last day as resident of the town of Acushnet will be August 26, 2021, and my resignation from the position of town moderator will be that same day. I had envisioned myself as the town moderator for years to come, as I really enjoyed the position. I will always have many positive memories of my time working in government in the town of Acushnet, and I hope that I have made a difference in this community. As you may or may not know, Roger was Board of Selectmen for three years. He was chairman when I first got elected. So Roger would like to thank you for your years of service to the town, and I wish you the best of luck for the future.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say the same. You know, Roger, if you're watching, been an outstanding public servant to the town of Acushnet, serving on Finance Committee, School Building Committee, jack-of-all-trades, always provided a great, you know, voice of reason on issues and did a great job as town mayor. Moderator, I'll be sad to see you go, but best election in your family.
Very good. Okay, well, because of Roger's resignation, it's going to be up to the Board of Selectmen to appoint an individual until the next annual town election, which is scheduled for May 14, 2022. So I'd just like to put it out there that if anybody's interested in filling the position, I believe it'll be for two meetings, because we are anticipating having a fall town meeting and then the annual town meeting at the school. So you'd be responsible for two meetings. And after that, if you continued on with the position, you'd have to run for the spot. You'd have to get your name on the ballot and appear on that May 14, 2022 ballot. So, and I do believe there is a small stipend that goes along with this position.
Yes.
So there is a little bit of money involved aspect. So anyone interested, please send the letter to the Board of Selectmen's office, and we'll review and give an answer to that.
Sounds good. Will you leave it open for 30 days?
We could, yeah, see what comes in the next meeting. The next meeting, I believe, is scheduled for August 16th.
Yes.
And so anyone interested, please submit a letter, and we'll go from there. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the retirement letter from Officer James Costa. And in his letter, Officer Costa says, "It was with great pleasure that I officially announced my retirement from the Acushnet Police Department after 33 years of service as of July 16, 2021." So that's the end of this week, I take.
Yes, sir.
Yes. "It has been an honor to serve the citizens of Acushnet and work alongside other dedicated members of the Acushnet Police Department. Please accept this letter as an official notification of my retirement." Officer Costa, I'm sure my fellow board members know you more than I have, since I've only moved to the town about five years ago, but do appreciate your service to the town. And I believe Chief has something to say?
Yeah, it'll just, it'll just take a minute. I've known Jim all my police life, so to speak, 26-plus years, so I condensed it down to one sheet. Anybody who knows me, I can talk, I can go. So I reduced the highlights above one sheet, and that would be the stories I can tell in mixed company that are, you know, great. As you know, we're here tonight to celebrate the retirement of Jim Costa after 33 years of service. His last shift, as you said, will be Friday, April 4. He began his career in law enforcement in 1987 with the Wareham and Marion Police Departments. Joined the Police Department, Acushnet Police Department, in 1988, which ironically is when I graduated from police school, Jim, so. He served the town with pride and distinction for over 33 years. He's excelled at a number of positions beyond just your normal patrol officer position, which is the inclination he's in now. In those past 33 years, he's been a firearms instructor for the department. He's been a member of the regional tactical team. He served as a detective. He served a couple of stints as the firearms licensing officer, and most recently, you may have seen him on the motorcycle as the department's only motorcycle operator the past few years. Jim's always brought a quiet confidence and calming to effect to any role or situation is presented with. He's willing us to go out well out of the way, well out of his way to help both the public and members of the department as second to no one. He served as a knowledgeable and patient mentor and training officer to many members of the police department early in their careers, myself included. Perhaps the best of Jimmy's many good qualities is his sense of humor. It's sometimes depressing line of work. He's always been the person to be able to lighten the mood, whether it be through a well-time comment or the occasional practical joke. Jim has always brought positivity to an otherwise dark profession. But the best thing about him is that he laughs equally as hard, whether he was the orchestrator of the joke or prank.
Or the target.
Very good natured stuff over the years. And one of the many things I've learned from him, the points, these points stand out. Do your job to the best of your ability, be compassionate, and don't get caught up taking yourself too seriously, which is very easy to do in this line of work. My closing, I want to thank Jim Norley for his 33 years of service to the town, but also wish he and his family nothing but the best as they begin the next chapter going forward. I also want to personally thank you, Jimmy, for the patience and commitment that you exhibited with me back in 1995 when I was first starting out as a young, wide-eyed, goofy-looking kid. As you see, how much has changed. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Jim, and I'll just echo the words, instead of repeating the words of the chief, Jimmy, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for 30-plus years, right? And you are that guy. You've always been a commendable officer in the town of Acushnet, and you've always mentored our young and upcoming rookies to become good officers, and you've always done the job with the utmost respect for the people of the community, but not only that for the department. So thank you very much for what you've done in your service to the town of Acushnet. It means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can't say it any better than that. Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just let me know when the retirement party is, okay?
It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the town.
All right, do you like any citizens?
Nope, I didn't prepare a speech. I didn't have enough time, you know, 33 years.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We deserve it.
Chief Chairman, if I may, Officer Costa is not only 33 years with the Acushnet Police Department, but we go back to being called firefighters together back in the mid-'80s.
It's a true story.
So Jimmy, for a short period of time, had a chance to be a hero, and then he decided the whole department wishes him nothing but the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. You have any openings?
Very good then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the meeting mail, we have two letters of interest from the Finance Committee.
On the one, on the letter, he was asking me, did Jimmy be appointed a special police officer, or is that coming up sooner or later?
Yep.
Hey, Chief!
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 Appointment as special officer?
Oh, yeah.
Good call. Thank you. He just, essentially, he just noted that he wanted to try to make him.
I guess I was missing continuing part two, when Jimmy had me all choked up. But also, like, the fault we've done in the past in the last three retirees we have is to have Jim Costa appointed as a special police officer. What that does, it allows him to be able to work details, which we normally struggle to fill this time of year. He'll be on that rotation, so you'll still see him out and about if the board so chooses to appoint him as a special.
All right, well, do I have a motion?
One question for Mr. Costa.
Sure.
Will you do it in 90-degree heat, because most of them don't?
I'm doing it.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
You're free now.
Thanks, Chief.
Move on.
Okay, moving on now with meeting mail. We have a couple of letters of interest for the openings on the Finance Committee. One is from gentleman Eric Chu. In his letter, he writes, "I am currently an active volunteer with the EMA and also the Council on Aging. While I understand I will have to refuse myself from any votes regarding these two town departments, I feel as though this is my time to step up and support my community. Professionally, I work as an IT manager, which has also allowed me to partner with Chris Oliver on the computer upgrade projects at the golf course, EMA, COA, and fire station. I also attend town meeting on a yearly basis, more when there was also a fall town meeting. If I should be chosen, I would be honored to serve on the Finance Committee with the present members and be a team player." Gentlemen, do I have a...
Motion to appoint Eric Chu, who's a Finance Committee member.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, Eric. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And to put you in touch with the appropriate people. Second, on letters of interest for the Finance Committee position, I have a letter from gentleman Pete Benoit, 29 Gabriel Farm Drive, Acushnet, Mass. And it says, "I understand there are three openings," well, actually, two, "in the Finance Committee, and I am interested in being considered for one of them, as I feel I would be a great fit for the position in my town. My wife and I are 16-year residents of Acushnet, and we love the town. Our son went through the Acushnet school system several years ago, and my daughter just finished middle school last year and is currently attending Old Colony High School. I have a bachelor's degree from UMass in business management and currently serve as the treasurer for a national 501(c) charity, where I am fiscally responsible for the operation of the organization and the charitable disimbursements we make. The consideration is appreciated." Gentlemen?
Is this Mr. LaBine?
It is.
Mr. LaBine.
Very good.
Nice to meet you.
I didn't realize I stood out. I apologize for that.
Nice to meet you. Oh, I know everybody else in the room, so that was a good guess.
I got to thank you, too, for putting me on the docket, or the letter on the docket, at the same time that Jim was going through his retirement thing, because I was not aware of it ahead of time, so.
Very good.
I've been friends with Jolene for 15 years.
Okay, very good. Very good. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Does that close all our Finance Committee appointments?
That closes them all. We have a thanks Finance Committee now. Very good. Can meet Eric in the back there, and then, so, well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, next on appointments, we have a certificate presentation to a young man, Shawn Brown. There you go, big smile. You want to come up to the podium, Shawn? Not really?
You're a young man, you're going to do this, too.
For everyone out there, Shawn is valedictorian over at Fairhaven High School this year. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
On all your achievements, so. Now that you've done the high school part of it, what's, what's your future hold?
I'm planning on attending UMass Amherst for the next four years, going into computer engineering.
Very good. Very good. So, so you'll be staying there? You'll be living on campus?
Yeah, I'll be living there.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Well, in appreciation for your academic accomplishments, we have a official citation from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
And your dad was a selectman back in the day. I'm sure he gave out a few of these. Okay, and as it reads, it's from the town of Acushnet. Board of Selectmen official citation, be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Shawn A. Brown in appreciation of your academic accomplishments and graduation as valedictorian of the class of 2021 at Fairhaven High School, awarded this day, July 12, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, just want to say, Shawn, I've known you for a while, since you were a young guy, but I had the really good fortune of getting to know your dad, Bob Brown, and your mom, Jen. And, you know, whenever we get together, your dad really talks about you and your brother and your brothers and your sisters, and how proud he is of his family and the accomplishments that you guys had. So congratulations to you and to Bob and Jen. Congratulations on raising some really excellent, excellent children.
Thank you.
You know, I know the family as well, so you're fortunate to have such great parents, Shawn, and I'm sure you're fortunate to have your brothers and sisters, which I don't know, but I do know your mom and dad very well, and they are very good people, so you should be happy of that, and don't abandon your mother, because I can already see the tears in her eyes. So, you know, make sure you know how to use that telephone.
Okay, want to do an official citation for him?
Sure.
All right, very good. Shawn, congratulations on everything, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Okay? There you go. All right.
All right, Shawn, congratulations.
Congratulations. You can let me know when that party's going to be, too, okay?
I think it was already last week.
Well, Mr. Benoit, I don't know, you live on Gabriel Farm Drive, right?
Yes.
You know the Browns? They're right around the corner from me on Lake Street.
We're in the town. We're the ones that have that big party on Labor Day weekend. Feel free to go out.
Okay, next on their appointments, we have a certificate presentation to have a Sylvia on Council on Aging Director. And here to present that today is State Rep. Chris Hendricks.
You coming up?
Yeah. You're going to come up and get it.
So, I guess we can face this way. So I just wanted, on behalf of the House of Representatives, present to you a citation from the Chamber in recognition of the award that I recommended you for, the Massaron Award. All the work that you did during the COVID was really amazing. This time, you really taught us that the people, the advocacy people, the people on the ground, the boots on the ground, the people who really do all the work. So thank you for all you've done, and people at the Council on Aging, so they love you so much, and you do such good work. Yeah, and you've made such a difference in their lives, so thank you so much.
You guys want to come to work?
Yeah.
Come on now, Heather. Don't be shy. It's long night for me to wear sweatpants.
Picture from the waist up.
Yeah, that's right. Looks like you have, looks like you have regular pants.
You can tell who's used to the Zoom calls.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, very good. That wraps up our appointment section of tonight's agenda. I don't know if the citizens who we just appointed, if you want to, you know, move on and that sort of thing, or hang out, it's up to you. We're going to be talking about contracts and fire assessment centers and that sort of thing, so.
Sounds like the whole takes money, right?
Yeah. Very good. So next on the old business, last meeting, we were presented with an ASME, which I don't know, it's the Union of Town Hall Workers and Police Dispatches, a union wage and classification plan. And gentlemen, I briefly looked it over and would suggest taking another month and addressing it at our next meeting.
At minimum, Mr. Chairman, I mean, there's a lot to go through, and I think you sit down and there's even on it, so, you know, we'll see where we get to with the next meeting with answers and things of the like, but we have a contract in place that settles out at the end of the year, so I do know that we'll be negotiating the following contract, but it doesn't expire for a year, so I feel we have plenty of time to acknowledge that wage class.
That work for you, Mr. Benoit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so do I have a motion at the table till the next meeting?
Further.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. Next, on their old business, we have golf personnel employment agreements, wage and class. Now, this is something we've already reviewed in the past, and it pertains to four employees, I believe?
Yes.
Surely?
Yep. Four.
And seems like the wage, you know, the golf committee presented us with a wage and classification agreement on these positions, and they fall into the line with what was budgeted at the town meeting. I don't have any additional comments on this, Mr. Gaspar?
No, I didn't. I did, Mr. Chairman, go through the exercise as the golf committee, Management Committee had done, and I know this has been done a couple of years back with Mr. Norley, and I do understand that there's been some changes to the wage and class, which I have right here, and I did my own scoring of the individuals, and I did come up with a different score, but the grade remains the same. So I'm fine with the numbers that were presented in the budget for the individuals, but I agree with the grade, but not so much the score.
Mr. Wona, you okay with...
Yeah. I would, Mr. Chairman, like to have the conversation of trying to, I think, Mr. Wona kind of alluded to it earlier on, where you talked about the golf course, trying to come up with some bonus plan for the golf course, because I think it's, when it comes to certain individuals there, where you're, you know, we're used to doing the average amount of rounds, it's 30,000 rounds, 32,000 rounds is the pitch that we've always gone, and sometimes we make it, sometimes we don't, but I'd like to come up with and work with the golf management committee to come up with some kind of a bonus plan that we can incentivize the employees, so that the better they do, they'll be compensated for that harder work, because it does involve a lot more work. If you're waiting on 30,000 rounds versus 40,000 rounds, which I believe we did somewhere in the realm of 40,000 rounds, it's a substantial amount more rounds, so it does take a lot more work on behalf of certain employees. So I'd like to come up with a concept, maybe, of creating some kind of a bonus incentive plan that correlates to the percentage of bonus of profitability that comes along with the Golf Enterprise Fund, because the way I look at the Golf Enter, it is, it is really, it's not from taxation, it's from user fees, it's golf, we're in the business of golf. We should be running it as a separate entity, as a business of golf, and I think if we incentivize that, we get all our employees to work harder, not only to make the course a better course, but to be more profitable, so we can use those profits and do the things that we originally said we would be doing with the profits from the golf course, i.e. fire engines, police cruisers, things of the nature. That was all involved in those past discussions decades ago, so I think that we could do something with that, and, you know, hopefully, the golf committee will come up with, you know, a strategy where we peg it towards the rounds of golf. Right now, we know 32,000 rounds is the average, so we keep it there, and that's, the pay is with the pay. But if you start increasing pays, and you did, because this was, a lot of this was pandemic-driven, I believe, and if it's not, great, but if it was, which I believe it was, because you couldn't go out and do anything else, you get a spike, and then you're going to raise salaries, and then you're going to get that drop-off, and if you get the drop-off, your salary still remains the same. So what it incentivizes is anything above the average that we've been doing. If you do 32,000 to 36,000 rounds, you do a percentage for a bonus sharing plan. If you do 36,000 to 40,000, you do a little bit higher percentage bonus plan. So we could work out the details later on, just something that I was trying to think of on how we could do and compensate for that additional, because it is additional work for some of the employees. That's how I, how I look at it. When we were discussing these individuals, that's what this was all about. To do a permanent salary fix is tremendously difficult dealing with. We don't only deal with the Golf Enterprise when it comes to employees, so I think an incentive program, bonus pay, would probably be a good idea.
Yes, as an enterprise founder, it is in a little different kind of category.
It's user fees, not taxation.
You know, and this year, I know they surpassed $2 million in gross, gross fees collected, so it was a banner year for them. Golf, I think, is on a little bit of an upswing, but definitely the COVID pandemic, you know, had a, I guess you could call, it was a positive effect on, on this particular area, so.
It did. I think, I think that incentive, as long as we're not compromising the game to get to that incentive, I think that we, we're all smart enough individuals, including the golf management committee, to put something together, and then hopefully, we could work that out and come up with something and take a vote on it and initiate that plan in the future.
So gentlemen, do I have a motion to accept these employment agreements for the four employees?
Motion to approve the wages as presented in the budget at the town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, we have Chief, Chief Gallagher, here presenting for the Assessment Center for the deputy position.
Gentlemen, ladies, good afternoon.
How are you today?
This was actually a fun meeting to be privy to, the Costa family and the Brown family and Heather's family as well. Gentlemen, we come back, you know, two weeks ago, I presented to you a draft RFP for solicitation of a consultant to put together an assessment center for promotion of one of our firefighter paramedics to the rank of captain. I understand you gentlemen wanted some additional time to, to review the document before we send it on its, hopefully, send it on its merry way, so I return tonight.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar?
So I don't, there's a few things in here, Chief, that aren't really such a big deal. It's just the, there's a, I think, a claricle arrow when it says the town consists of mostly residential tax base with approximately 90 miles of streets and roads. The last time I checked, DOL was like 67, maybe 70 road miles, so I don't know if that impacts anything, probably not. On one of the pages...
So, Mr. Gaspar, if I, if I could, just for a sec?
Yep.
I'm going to throw Chief Richmond under the bus or his predecessor. This was a cut and paste from the RFP that was used for the police department.
Okay.
We got the roads wrong, at least we're getting them consistently wrong.
Let me try it, Chief.
Yeah, so, I mean, again, that's DOL when you look at DOL. I mean, I know DOL is, well, every time you check the Department of Revenue's website, I think it's the last update was like 2015. I don't think much has changed as far as adding new roadway, maybe a couple, few miles, but the last time I was there was like 67 road miles for the town of Acushnet. At least that's what they have for our census. And then on page seven, the first line says, "Description of general skills of the firm, including the description of the consultant's familiarity and with assessment centers for civil service positions in Massachusetts." And then the earlier talking points over here, it says, "We are not civil service." So I don't know if you want to do something with that line, does it matter anything?
Well, the thought behind that, Mr. Gaspar, was we'd like to, we're no longer in civil service, you are correct. The special legislation, we will define all new hires and promotions from civil service, but we want the process to, to run somewhat parallel with what civil service is currently doing for promotion opportunities, especially executive officer, which captain would be, where there's the all-important assessment center with the additional written exam. So a consultant that... So a consultant that has experience preparing Assessment Center for municipalities that are both in and out of civil service would probably suit us the best.
Okay. So the bigger question, I think the biggest question that I had was the inside this. It says the split Assessment Centers, 70%, 30% is the written exam. And I've done some research on that, and there's a few positions out there for 2021 Fire Captain. And it says examination weights are 40% written exam, 40% Assessment Center, 20% education and experience. Can we talk?
Which, and that will be captured in the job posting. So the way that this is written, there would be a written examination. The candidate has to pass that with a score of 70 to continue.
Okay, that was one of my other.
Then they move to the Assessment Center, where there's multiple scenarios that they're given. At the end of the day, the way I would like to see it is 70% of the final grade from the Assessment Center is the scenario base. 30% is the grade that they've already passed, or they wouldn't have gone to the Assessment Center. That ranking then comes to me, I follow the job description, which could be, New Bedford is 50, 50, and 30. 50 assessment, 50 written, 30% education and experience. For Haven is 40, 40, and 20.
Okay.
You know, I'm not married to any particular number. I want to be able to include education and experience, and then some interview points from me as well. So I like the idea of at least 20% being the E and E.
Okay.
And so this document, the job posting that would be posted in the station and the candidates would see, would state that the final ranking, the person would be selected based on a breakdown of 40, 40, and 20.
So, okay, so why does this draft thing say 70, 30?
Because that's for the Assessment Center.
Okay.
The Assessment Center gets you to the 40, 40, 20.
Okay, so you would do the actual written examination first.
Through the Assessment Center.
In case we don't get, if we have three individuals, let's just use arbitrary numbers. If we have three individuals.
Which is a pretty good guess, by the way.
Three individuals going, and one gets a 65, they're out.
They're out.
Automatically disqualified at that point. Then we only have two candidates that would be for Assessment Center?
That would be of the two-step process. That ranking would be weighted 70, 30. The listener comes to me, I conduct the interview, and then I break down the final ranking. My justification for the promotion is based on 40, 40, 20.
So in the final, it'll be 40, 40, and 20.
Right.
And I talked to a few people that were out there in the business, and education and experience, they always say is pretty important.
Hugely important.
So I seen the 70, 30, and I was kind of thrown off on that, because, and I know Assessment Centers are playing a key role nowadays. We did it with the police chief's job. But I think the education and experience part really needs to be part of that element for the final score, right?
Right, very much so. And that will be detailed in the job posting.
So there'll be so many points added for education, current education, right. And the experience, you'll have a point system that'll be incorporated into the 70, 30 for the Assessment Center.
From my 20%, that I'm responsible for.
At that point, we go.
Interview the education and the experience. I will put together an algorithm that will assign points.
Right, and then we go down to the 40, 40, 20.
Right.
At the final outcome, to incorporate that last element, and that's how we write the 40, 40, 20.
Yep.
Okay.
So in just one last comment on this, I'm excited by this. You know, this was the process by which town, Chief Richmond. And it was one that not only is he confident in, but the men and women in his department are as well. The last significant promotion that we had in the Fire Department was 18 years ago. And that was because I had a good Saturday. Back then, it was the written exam, one test, no evaluation, no Assessment Center, no education, no experience, nothing. If you had a good Saturday at Bishop Durfee High School in Far River, and you got one point over the other guy, you were the top of the civil service list. This provides us, this will allow us to get a much more rounded candidate than one who should be more than capable of stepping up to the suit and responsibilities of a captain.
Yeah, that's why when we make the ultimate decision for replacement of Fire Chief is we want to keep, we would hope to keep this system parallel, right? And not say, oh, now we're going to include education and experience, because you give somebody the upper hand, right?
Exactly.
So, and that's why I was trying to make sure.
That variable that you can add.
Yeah, and then you, and then you have somebody saying, well, you know, depending on what board it is at the time, you're going to say, well, we're going to add five or 10 points, because you were captain. And so the other guy's going to do that much better, when it's really irrelevant at that point. So to try to keep everything in parallel, to keep today's test and Assessment Center running cohesively with what the future may look like for the ultimate replacement of Fire Chief, you want to try to keep all of that equal, so they can't say, well, you didn't do that last time, but now you're doing it. It's biased.
Right.
And I don't like that perception for the board to be caught up in that perception, where now you're manipulating things.
And I will tell you, speaking on their behalf, the members of the department don't want that cloud either. So that works well. The one thing I would like to ask you gentlemen, though, if it's not included in the draft, is the, we don't do these often, this is expensive. And we're going to get a process that everyone will be proud of and be able to agree that it was credible. But what I would recommend is that the listing stay valid for a period of time. Because there very well could be a scenario where this is up and ready to be, to have a captain promoted in December. And then based upon whatever my plans are, you may be looking at hiring or promoting another captain in the event. So why reinvent the wheel, why spend the money a second time? If we could keep this, my contract is open for two years. What I would suggest is that we add language to this RFP, saying that the results of this list, this list will be established for a minimum of two years, June 30th of 2024.
Yeah, they do, I've seen that in some of my research, Chief. I agree 100%, because we don't know what's going to happen either, right?
Right.
So I just have one, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind?
Please, Mr. Gaspar.
I, will the Assessment Center include an emergency scene simulation? So that'll all be integrated in?
So there's emergency response, there's an ethics issue that is presented, there's administrative tasks. And then because of the nature of the work that we do, there's a medical-based scenario. More management than how, what drug would you give, how would you manage it? Because that's the expectation of the captain. And then the Assessment Center reserves the fifth one for whatever they're picking up during the tests. These candidates may not be strong here, we may need to prod them a little deeper. So we'll use that fifth topic to prod them.
Yeah, I know, I've seen, I've seen some examples, they have multiple categories. Some of them can go all the way up to like 15 different categories for the Assessment Center. They call them assessors or something like that, that conduct this.
So Chief, just going to a scheduling-wise, we got a date that's incorrect, or, you know, was put in there prior. So you're looking like August 14th, you know, say, if it goes out this week, will it go out that quick? Or will it be like a couple of weeks before it goes out?
I'll work with the chief on whatever changes you guys are proposing, if any. And yeah, I mean, if we want to just take like a number of weeks, like put it three weeks out, or, you know, whatever, from the dates that are listed, we can do that.
There's a quick schedule I did, was just like by March, we would, the assessment would be done, would be completed, and then.
Well, I'm hoping a lot sooner than that.
Well, we're giving them 150 days, I know, but we are giving them five.
We're giving them 90 days once the reading list is established. In that parallels what civil service would do for any promotion.
I know, it says five months, you're reading the same thing that I have. It's 150 days, it's five months, I put four months, why so long?
Yeah.
And then the date above, you're talking about the July 14th, that definitely needs to be changed.
Right.
There's some little typographical things that you'll have to go back through and make some corrections to it.
Give me an idea of what's getting going, how it's all progressing through there, so. Mr. Wona, any comments?
I just, you know, I think anytime you go through some change, you always want to, or you're getting ready for changes, examine the system, the current system, this isn't, you know, a comment, or this isn't, you know, does a call, does a call department make sense, does it need to be added to, you know, integrated into the full-time? You know, it's just, it's always just a good time to review your practices, and I think this will help us do that. But, you know, I think, once the decision is made, you know, with a successor, I think it's an exciting time to just make sure we're doing everything about it. And if we have the proper policies in place, we have best practices in place, we have a great opportunity to review.
When this person is promoted to this position, will you be looking to fill again? Will someone from Cal come up? Or is that, I mean, to be determined?
We have never hired a full-time employee that wasn't first a call member. And I will be damned if I'm going to be the first chief that breaks that. The next person, you'll have to ask them, but I'm not going to change that. And look what we've done, you know, we had a very qualified call member who was a captain that I had promoted to the rank of captain, came over as a rookie firefighter, and where the town is sending him to paramedic school. And we're investing in him, lives in town, built a home, you know, it's going to be here forever. That's the, that's the format that we may be using. But we do have a couple of call members who, on their own, have gone for paramedic training. So the, it's not a very deep bench, but there is more than one person on the bench.
Very good. All right, gentlemen, can I get a motion to move ahead with the Fire RFP for the Assessment Center?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Have a good evening. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have new business, round two of the year-end interdepartmental transfers. With the audience, we have Melissa. So Melissa, you'd like to brief the select vote about this and go through the page of transfers?
My first question is, would I be able to go a little out of order to get these two gentlemen out, or do I stay in order?
I'm sorry?
This is police chief and fire chief, hold on here, can I do those first to get them out of here?
Sure.
Okay. So, um.
Oh, I see what you mean, I see what you mean, okay, a bunch of transfers, okay.
Okay, so we'll do number eight first, police, since it's.
Sure.
So the first one is out of police, clothing allowance, we'll be taking out $23,000. The planning board will be taking out of salaries of $2,989. Treasurer collectors' salaries, assistant collector treasurer, we will take out $2,002. And the reserve fund will be taking out $54,120, and that's $82,111. And the police chief wanted to be here, so if he had any questions on that, he will be glad to answer them. But there's an explanation over here, described, like explaining that he had sent some employees to academy, and there was no line for the academy, and there was overtime due to someone being on military leave, and there was an officer on injury on duty, and another one on light duty.
I got a pretty good breakdown, taking me 90 seconds to get it to you.
Very good, Chief. Please.
The dollar amount, the dollar amount is high, it represents probably a little over 3% of our overall budget. I can say, coming into, after May, after the month of May, with the reconciliation through there, we were in very good shape, or pretty good shape, I should say, we were on the positive side. Fortunately, June, you know, traditionally, June is a heavy month for us for a variety of reasons, which I'll get into. What Mel was referring to as far as academy, for the FY '21 budget that we set going into COVID, we actually cut $50,000 for academy salaries and about $6,700 in academy equipment. The thought process was, we were going to hire two full-timers, we needed to hire two full-timers. Looking at the budget, we realized the way our civil service list was comprised, that one of the candidates, one of the top two candidates, had the full-time academy already. So we were able to, if we were able to hire one, that was going to be a freebie, so to speak. We didn't have to pay for him to go to the academy, didn't have to pay the salary, didn't have to pay for his equipment. The second one, we pulled the trigger on, so to speak, in November, December, anticipation of Officer Costa retiring. Because traditionally, and I say traditionally because of the 26 years I've been here, it seems like we're always playing catch-up. And I can tell you, with the environment now, with public safety police especially, the number of interested candidates are dwindling, the job is changing quickly. So the days of us hiring, you know, four, five, six part-timers and using them to plug the holes, it's going to go away. We don't even have those part-timers now, we have two. We have one that's a long-time part-timer, excellent person, I'd take him full-time in a second. Fortunately, he's aged out, and he's got a, you know, career with another, another agency. The other, the other officer was due to graduate in May of, from part-time academy, May of last year. COVID delayed that until September, early October. Then we had to send him for psych testing, medical testing, physical aptitude testing. And then lo and behold, COVID ramped up, so I really didn't want to put two people in cruiser if I didn't have to. I didn't want to put two people in dispatch if I didn't have to, so we held off on his training for a period of time. So he's actually just at the point now, where he's going to be able to contribute on the desk, probably within the next three or four weeks. So reality of the money that we spent, we sent the gentleman, Dominic Sullivan, to the academy. The money we spent there, it's probably somewhere around $25,000 total, 25, 26, between fees, equipment, and his salary. Some of the fees, we do recoup, we have that incentive where we deduct $25 a week until the $3,900 academy fee is out. So he was out of pocket, we get it back, but then if, if the officer stays here for three years, traditionally, they're entitled to it back. The thought process is the old, if they stay for three years, chances are they're going to be here quickly. So for the academy line items, like I said, that's about, that's about $25,000, $26,000 that wasn't anticipated. The other thing was, we, in fall, we promoted a sergeant, we promoted additional sergeant, and sixth sergeant, which a lot of the money was coming from officer in charge pay, where we were having patrol officers in the absence of a sergeant being paid 10% more to be in charge of the shift. But we promoted a sergeant to kind of mitigate that, you know, reduce that number, and it did reduce that number. What we also did, as the board will recall, was we had two excellent candidates on the list, and we made the decision at the time to promote an additional sergeant that we didn't budget for. Not so much the, not so much the person, but the position, so the amount of that raise. And that was in, trying to again, get ahead of the curve, where we have a sergeant that's, you know, within eyesight. You know, close, not close as Jimmy or anything like that, but he's within eyesight of retirement. And again, we didn't want to have to play catch-up, because the candidates, both candidates were super outstanding, and they had both killing it right now. So the number I came out on that, you know, on base pay only, was about $19,000. I left overtime out, figuring the overtime figure is probably more than us, might be offset by the officer in charge pay that we're paying. So those are the two big things that we did, that we actually weren't budgeted for. But they were necessary to get, to get where we are now. Some indirect variables, again, building on what Mel had said. We have a clause, we have two officers currently in the armed services and the reserves. And when they go, in some cases, if it's active duty, we're responsible for a percentage of their pay, the difference between their military pay and the regular pay, but more importantly, we're losing a body, so to speak. So we lost 23 weeks to military leave in fiscal year 2021. In addition, we lost another six weeks to an officer that was injured on duty, was out 100%. Again, the money we're paying him, but also the absence of having that person for, we have four, we don't replace the first person out. We had 15 weeks lost combined, a couple of officers had non-service connected surgeries, so they were out for 15 weeks. They were all sick. Again, we didn't anticipate that long-term. We also had an officer that was on light duty for a period of time, for about 19 weeks. So that's like 63 weeks that we didn't budget for. It's those, if you ask Chief Alves, or even Chief Poitiers before him, you're lucky if you hit one of those every fiscal year. We actually hit all four, so that's, that was added, that adds to the deficit. The additional thing is, we've hired dispatches, we have full-time dispatches. Unfortunately, we had, coming into this fiscal year, we were, one came and left, we were down to three. So we had about 20 weeks where we were training dispatches, where we actually had two people on the desk training. But in the meantime, not only were we paying double people to work the desk, we also were paying, in most cases, overtime to replace, to fill those open desk shifts. And given that all into play with the time we lost, we do have a caveat where we operate under the caveat, if there's four people on the road, and the desk person calls out, we'll bounce them. But we didn't have, we were running at three, so we couldn't bounce anybody to the desk. And the other thing, I hate to blame things on COVID, but in all reality, last year, we were screwed up, and the officers in the contract had the ability to buy back every one of their days. Every one of, I should check myself, every one of their holidays, of which they get 12, every one of their personal days, of which they get three, and every one of their vacation days, and depending on what step they're sitting on, could be anywhere from five to 25 days. They have the ability to cash those days in for full pay, which normally does not happen until June, because people realize, they save the day, save the days. I was of the same ilk when I was in the union, you save them because you might need them. Then all of a sudden, June comes, and you can't get the time off, because people are on vacation, and you just run, you just run out of time. But in the back of your mind, you know you're not gonna lose the days because contractually you have the ability to buy them back. And I, I don't have access to look at buybacks in previous years. But I would suggest to you that buybacks for FY21 were significantly higher than in past years. So, that, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, one other, one other small thing is in the past, we'd have part-timers to set up, to, to step up and fill shifts. We'd carry three or four or five part-timers. But whereas the department's so young and we've had to put on people, our, our part-time ranks are depleted. And now with the regulations that have brought on by the new police reform law, chances are the part-time program, we can touch that at another time. But chances are the part-time program, as we know, is all done. But that's, I felt, you know, after talking to Mel last week, you know, the dollar amount was, I thought was pretty high. Given we were coming into, coming into June, I didn't think we were in that bad a shape. But we just, you know, everything kind of came to a head. As a matter of fact, June, we lost an officer to military deployment for June. And that, that really kind of, kind of sealed the fate, so to speak.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for the explanation, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, do you guys have any more questions?
No, no. Chief explained it very well.
So, we're okay with that when we move on?
Yep. You can move on. You got fire next?
Yes, we got fires number nine. Where out of highway salaries permanent, we'll be taking out sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars. Town building is salaries overtime, one thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars. And forestry tree removal will be taking out twenty-nine hundred dollars. And the reserve fund will be taking out nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. That total is forty thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars. And that was overtime year due to full, uh, full-time employee being out for eight months.
The forestry, taking money out of forestry with the minimal amount they have in their budget, did you get that approved through the tree warding before money was pulled from forestry?
He turned in his last invoice for the fiscal year and that's what he had left over.
So, he's okay with that? Because I know I've had conversations with him before, that he was struggling with his budget.
Yes, that's what I'm also...
So, as long as the tree warding's okay?
He reached out to him and got his invoice. That was forty-eight hundred, so that was just what was left. I agree with you, Kevin.
Everybody's looking at each other. All I'm doing is asking a question.
No, I completely agree with you, because I question the same thing.
Okay. And eight months, what was the deal, Chief, with this?
Mr. Chairman, we had a, a full-time employee who was ill for a period of time, came back, had to leave again for a period of time. And then eventually that led to a long-term absence and eventually separation from employment. So, we had a very long period of time where we were, at first, hopeful that the employee would come back. And then we had to go through the process of fairly making sure that we separated.
I recall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, very good. If you want to slide on number one, run for a look. I think you'll also...
So, number one will be the veterans department, veterans benefits for thirteen thousand four hundred ninety dollars. The town accountant, salaries town accountant of one thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars. And selectmen salaries clerical of two thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars. And that is for town council legal expenses totaling seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Now, we, I know we did this last round, but these are for the last two, uh, May, June invoices for the legal expenses with PG and PD.
That's in addition to like the retainers that we pay every month?
Yeah.
That's kind of...
That's, that's the to, the total of the bills.
Okay. All right.
For that fiscal year?
Yep.
That, yeah.
That's above and beyond what Mr. DeRoche was talking about. We have a, a retainer.
Yes.
And that's been blown through. And we've already done a reserve fund transfer in exceedance of that. And now this is in another exceeding on top of that last exceedance. So, yes, to answer your question, it's above and beyond the last bills that we paid, including the retainer.
But the retainer is billed monthly. So, they do a flat four thousand a month. And so, these bills, the two bills add up to seventeen one eighty-nine. So, if you minus out the eight thousand, that would be the retainer, then that would give you the...
Yeah, we're doing it in this format, though. This is basically taking money from Peter to pay Paul.
Yep.
So, that means we've expended that whole budget line item fright, right? So, forget, that's all gone. That eighty grand is gone. And we've already done this one other time. Now, we're doing it again. So, what I'm saying to Mr. DeRoche is that eighty plus what you see here, plus whatever the last one we did. All the combination of it. So, yeah, it's good, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, so number two will be finance committee salaries clerical of one hundred seventy-three dollars. And that's to cover the miscellaneous compensated balances of a hundred seventy-three dollars. And we kind of eat the budget from last round two that a long-term employee left. And we thought we estimated well, but of course, we were a little shy. So, that's just the last of it.
All right.
Number three will be the assessors salaries clerical of fifty-two dollars, going to the seller, uh, assessors salaries overtime of fifty-two dollars. I know this is bringing it from salary line to another salary line. But, um, the reason we're doing this is there was no overtime budgeted for FY21. So, we're not allowed to leave that line negative. We have to cover it. So, now library, um, from salaries clerical will be taking two thousand dollars to the library, other supplies, purchase updated books of two thousand dollars. And this was approved by the library, um, committee. And this is due to a lot of these services needed due to COVID. Okay. So, I'll just continue to get questions who pop in, right?
Very good.
Okay. Number five will be council on aging, uh, the salaries line of two thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars. And the town accountant salaries town accountant line for two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars to the pensions Medicare. And it comes up to five thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, and this is also due to COVID. Since there were more employees working, um, due to even EMA and COVID, they were all doing COVID hours, that increased the salaries, which increased the dues, both of my here. The next, number six is, um, building department out of salaries clerical will be taking a seven hundred and twelve dollars. Miscellaneous celebrations will be seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Streetlights, energy, four thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars. And that's for the technology telephone, um, six thousand dollars. It's kind of the same reasoning of the last transfer needed. There were a lot more expenses due to, um, COVID, his internet was the firewall deal and all the purchases that were not budgeted for, phone lines, licenses. But this is the final, this is it.
Okay.
Seven is the town clerk travel line will be taking out seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, um, going to the town clerk temporary salaries line for seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, they had a lot more mailings for certificates and licenses. Again, due to COVID, a lot of it was mailing versus in person. So, that was for that. Number ten miscellaneous celebrations line for ninety-three dollars will be going, um, to the technology salaries line for ninety-three dollars. We do a transfer at the end of the year that does, to cover for the school. And the school gave a little bit of a high increase in the town debt. So, that's just the little bit to cover that we do not have anticipated. Number eleven, the sewer enterprise fund energy line of one thousand two hundred nineteen dollars, going to the sewer enterprise fund salary superintendent of one thousand two hundred nineteen dollars. It just was over-expended, I think. It was not, um, budgeted correctly. So, it was a little of a mishap.
So, that's the one I had questions on, because that's a salary employee. So, how do we not have enough money inside that line item to cover the salary of that salaried employee?
I think last year, we looked at adjusting the percentage for the superintendent and lowering it from sewer. And then that didn't happen. They didn't, the, the change wasn't made. So, that's why he's went over on that. I think we looked at, um, and I reached out to Kathy and she had no idea of any kind of change that had happened. And I couldn't find anything in my emails. So, yeah, so that was, the budget was changed to reflect that. But they didn't, they, they didn't present any kind of change. So, his actual salary didn't get adjusted.
Okay. I'll look at the budgets. I remember making those adjustments with you, though.
Yeah.
How like they quake and the changes that they do, right? So, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
We can. Well, you're okay with letting me...
Yeah, that's fine. Don't have much of a choice at this point in the year.
Number twelve is a library salaries clerical of three thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars. And the soil board, um, salaries line for a hundred forty-eight dollars. And this is for park salary line totaling three thousand four hundred sixteen dollars. There were not a lot of activities happening in the previous fiscal years. So, there was a higher volume in FY21, creating a deficit over spec figure.
Okay.
Okay. Number thirteen is planning board salaries line for one thousand six hundred sixty dollars, going to planning board, um, communications advertising of one thousand six hundred sixty dollars. More advertising was needed for solar projects. And the last one is CMS trash, trash recycling hauling of, for two hundred forty-four dollars, going to CMS salaries permanent line, two hundred forty-four dollars. And this is due to the recycling being open longer hours.
Right. Recycling center.
Correct. Any questions on anything?
No, so the total transfer is one hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
And a hundred and twenty-two thousand three oh nine come from police in file.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to, uh...
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, next on the new business, uh, conservation agent appointment. As you know, probably what, three weeks ago, Julie, we interviewed three qualified candidates for the position of conservation agent. For people who don't know, we've taken the conservation department, uh, conservation agent job from a forty-hour position and are bringing it down to a twenty-one hour position. And a twenty-one hour part-time position. And after our, um, interviews and discussions, I'd offer the job to, uh, Pat Hannon as our new part-time conservation agent.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Did that work out?
That works, yeah. And we, we do have a draft contract that, um, if you guys want to vote to approve that as well. Or if anyone has comments, we can make adjustments to.
It looks good right now. I'll re-read it. I read it, it don't seem like there's anything disproportionate from what we've done in the past.
It's with the standard language.
So, I'm gonna approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
We have reservations if we need to change. That's all. That's good, right?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Last on the agenda tonight, concerning the climate public works. And it's, I believe it's, uh, approving monies for an asphalt roller?
Yep, so, um, we have this on here just so you guys can approve. Mass DOT does estimates that you guys typically approve. And I know you did approve this. But this is the final report. And, um, so it does need a, a vote of the selectmen as it's gonna be signed by the chair of the board of selectmen. So, this shows the final report, um, for the asphalt roller.
It's already been purchased and used. Motion to approve.
Well, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Town administrators report?
I'm all set.
We're all set on that? Selectment announcement?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
Real quickly. Obviously, if you've been driving around town with all your blinders on, um, the utility companies have been digging up a lot of roads. I've gotten a lot of complaints from residents about the utility companies. We know that, we understand that they have to dig up the roads. The problem is, is they're, they're massively sloppy in their work. And when they're digging up the roads, that's a foot wide trench for the utilities. They're busting up the rest of the road with heavy equipment. Um, and they're only going in to repatch it. So, I think that we need to take that up to see if we have a policy in place with the DBW, to see what responsibilities the utility companies have. Because they blew up nice street over here, right down the road over here, right around the corner from, across street from compulsive design, the YSLon place, several years back. And it's still a pile of junk. They're not coming back and re-grading the road and repaving over it. We have to hold the utility companies, um, responsible for this work. They can't come into the town and just rip up roads and leave them all decrepit and thinking that's fine with the municipality. So, I would ask for the boards, um, looking into this and support and looking at it after this, because it's really starting to aggravate a lot of our residents. It's, it's really getting bad. And the second one is as far as Verizon and EverSource goes is with our utility polls, about done dealing with that, with residents' complaints. Even though I fully understand it, um, we need to figure out who the contact is at Verizon or EverSource. And enough is enough. When we have car accidents, we're supposed to have somebody that's responsible to be able to write down the damage, take an assessment of the damage, get reimbursed by that person's insurance company, which I don't think is happening. And if that's not happening, then it's being paid for by the taxpayers, which is, is totally unacceptable to me. And then what happens is Verizon comes in, they gotta pull that split. They put a new pole in, three feet in front of the rear pole, sister up to it. EverSource comes in, hangs their cables and they're all done. And then we have a hole with another pole that sits there for six months or a year with no street lamp being put back on it. Just, I, I guess I'm just really frustrated with utility companies coming into the town, doing a half-assed job and not putting things back the way they found them. So, I, I think that's something that we need to address. I think street lamps are a major problem. I know we talked about that with Mr. Merritt, that we subcontracted this out or they won the award or whoever did that mess from Boston. That's unacceptable. We have street lamps on poles for reasons. We don't wanna wait six months for somebody to replace a street lamp. We have, I already know that we have a certain, um, local contractor that has a couple of these lamps stored in their building because they're tired of seeing them sit on the side of the road. So, they've been called in to take them off the road. It's just, it's gotta stop somewhere. And the utility companies are just doing a horrible job of this kind of work. And we need to hold them accountable for their actions. I mean, nobody would do work like this. We had an accident, a flip over on halfway road. Pole was left back inside the pavement, which why would you have a pole inside a pavement, right? Instead of outside pavement. Car flipped over not too long ago. I responded to an email with Ms. Heebin on that, saying I discussed this issue nine months ago. Nobody cared to listen. Now, we have somebody flipping a car over because they're driving into a frigging telephone pole. So, this is a major problem. There's one out in Maine on Leonard Street right now that's still sitting there, assisted up against another pole. It just, it, we just can't tolerate this. We, as a municipality, as public leaders, we should not be tolerating this kind of negligence in our town by utility companies. So, um, I think we need to figure out who, who we hold accountable for it, who's our lead person that we contact, whether it be EverSource or Verizon. And that, that contact starts happening from our office. Not from Jim Merritt, not from anybody else. It's gonna come from our office, saying this is unacceptable. This needs to be fixed. And it needs to be fixed in a timely manner, not six months down the road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Wait, take it. Okay, uh, for information only, the following boards and commissions have vacancies. Please consider serving your community by submitting a letter of interest to the board of selectmen. The agricultural commission has one vacancy and two alternate vacancies. The beautification committee has ten vacancies.
One more.
Bylaw review committee has one vacancy.